I will call the regular session of the city council meeting to order at seven o'clock. Now, down to the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have roll call.
Mayor Perry.
Here.
Council President Oliveris.
Present.
Councilor Hensley.
Here.
Councilor Jackman.
Here.
Councilor Lewis.
Eric.
Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Okay, and, okay, how about visitors?
You forgot.
Yeah. That's not possible.
Take your data.
Tim Bartley.
Okay, do you have a motion to pay the bills? From, uh, when was that? I don't know which one bills were being, oh.
April, wouldn't it?
Yeah, April 21st, I've got it here on my other thing, yeah, April 21st, the regular session.
I'll make a motion that we pay the bills for April.
On second.
Uh, Mayor Perry?
Oh, I.
Council President Oliveris.
Yeah.
Hi.
Councilor Hensley.
Hi.
Councilor Jackman.
Here.
Councilor Lewis.
Hi.
All of them, yes, motion passes.
Okay, anyone make a motion except the minutes of April 21st, regular session. Anyone make a motion to accept the minutes from April 21st?
I'll second that motion.
Call in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. I guess now is time for public comment. It's the time to speak to the city council or the mayor at any subject, including what is on the agenda, listed on the agenda except for public hearings. Time limit is three minutes per person. Do we have any public comment?
Salesmen.
Oh, okay.
Let's see the people over there.
They did yesterday.
Yesterday.
Cool.
And you?
You, you got your paperwork in for your, uh, handicap today?
Actually, we got in today, we can't act on it till tomorrow, we gotta send letters out to around the city and community to make sure, you know, this agreement is for it.
Out of curiosity, why is this in there?
There were a couple of duplicate pieces of paperwork in there, so that's, that is, that bill was already taken care of, it was just, I'm just curious. Oh, yeah. That's why I have an answer.
Okay, we got city recorded before.
Eh, I'm good this time. Uh, finance update, so, cool. So, the bulk of the work I've been doing, really a lot of the last few months, is getting this budget for this year sorted out and then writing the next one, and, uh, hello. And, yeah, I finally got the budget written, and it was given to everybody on the budget committee, and, uh, we're on track to meet next week, so, yeah, that's good. We got our SB 561 funds in, so those at $60,000, and so far, we spent it on the meters and a tablet that we're going to use to operate them and the services. So, we got the invoice for the meter installation, and we had that check signed tonight. We're gonna wait until the project is officially completed to send it to them. Um, basically, if we waited until next meeting to do that, that's cutting it really close to the end of the fiscal year, and I don't know how quickly they deposit checks. So, I wanted to get it signed now so that we could get it deposited with them as soon as possible, but we're not going to give it until they let us know that everything's done. Yeah, so that was, cool. It is, it is really nice to not be spending all of my time on budget spreadsheets, as much as I love it, there's a lot of stuff that needs to be done, uh, so I do get to do that now, and I'm very happy with that.
And I came in and talked to you about some things, and all of those have been addressed?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there were, there were, there were, I think, three boxes that were filled out with some incorrect numbers on there with some previous years' personal services amounts, but those have been corrected. So, you all gets, get copies of that, we will point that out at the next meeting. Uh, city ordinance organization, so that's my next big thing that I'm doing a lot of the time. Uh, after the money's sorted out, once you know the money, then you have to know the rules, because we have rules going all the way back to 1953 that may or may not still be enforced, and I need to know what those are. Uh, we need to make sure we're enforcing everything properly and following all of our policies, uh, and getting rid of things that are no longer legal. Um, you know, big case in point is our procurement policy from 1994 that has missed 30 years' worth of law changes, so that needs to get done. So, what I'm doing right now is going through every year, going backwards, back to 1953, and if an ordinance has been abolished, I just write down this was abolished, and if an ordinance has not been abolished, I, you know, I get that transcribed, and I think I'm back to, I mean, as of today, I finished 1981. So, there's actually not much more to do beyond that. I think, yeah, I think it goes back to 53, but there weren't as many ordinances passed per year before that, so it's not going to be too much of a headache. I created a second city website where I wrote, I transcribed all the ordinances, and I put them on there, so rather than having to generate a PDA for a word document, there's just a simple website where people can go and scroll through, read everything. So, that's been fun. Uh, one of the things I would like to, when we kind of organize our ordinances, is organize them by chapter rather than by year. Um, so like, we have ordinances for 1982, they deal with changes to our urban growth boundary, street vacation policies, state revenue sharing, zoning and development, water services fees, and council rules, and that's, there's nothing tying them together other than the year, and I think it'd be a little smarter to kind of tie things together with the same topics rather than just the year they were passed, so that's something I would like to do once we get all of that sorted out.
Kind of would make them a lot easier to find.
Yeah.
And understand.
Yes.
Yeah, anyway, like Nick Heineck was asking about water and stuff, it's like, well, I think I finally found it, it's from 1982, so, um, and it hasn't been changed.
Which one's that?
The water ordinance we were talking about.
The well?
All of that. Yeah. Uh, next one, so the city, oh yeah, so I said before the meeting started that we got some state flags, or state and national flags that are both flown over the Capitol. So, uh, we're gonna put them up soon, and, you know, I think it's just a cool thing to have as a city, um, we get these certificates signed by the governor verifying that, yeah, they were flown over the Capitol, so, yeah.
And what are we doing with the old ones?
I will find somebody to dispose, to probably.
Probably leave it just, probably.
Sweet Home can't do it anymore because their city council said that it puts off fumes or oxytocin acids, even though they're doing it in a crematory, so.
Maybe take them down to the American Legion.
Yeah.
There's a box outside with the arch around it, that's for flags. And I'm a member, if you want me to take it.
Yeah, I'll just get, I'm gonna give it to Council President Dina.
Is he the president?
Um, another cool thing, uh, me and JD toured the Lebanon area radio enthusiast compound behind the hospital recently. Um, they operate kind of a, a standby radio network to keep, uh, major government agencies and other public entities communicating in the event of everything going, let's see, if like Cascadia earthquake happens or something like that, they will still be able to be set up, not just to talk on the radio, but they can use radio to send emails, so, uh, that's pretty cool to be able to have something like that, um, in the area. I think it's really important that we support this kind of continuity of government operation. I know, not from our general fund, obviously, because we don't have a lot of money, but cities can be great pass-through entities to support, um, operations like that for grants. So, if they need like a new radio, and that'll be something that'll be helpful for us if all of our telecommunications systems go out, that would be the kind of thing we get a city grant for to help them out, so.
So, is the layers, a type of radio different than ham radio?
Uh, no, that's just.
Their systems were different, they're.
Yeah.
They're more of a digital, where the ham is more of an analog.
I know, and Nick Heineck, when he was mayor, he was actually, had a sea, a ham radio coordination around the city for doing that kind of stuff way back.
Yeah.
And usually, ham radios take up a lot of power, too, but they showed us didn't take much power.
Yeah, so they, they do presentations to cities, if we want to hear more about what they're doing on there. They have a lot more to do with Lebanon, because Lebanon's such a bigger thing, so there's not as much that we could do with them, but, um, some of them have some ideas for things that could work with them. One of them is on the, uh, the fire district board, and he'd love to build a fire substation up here, that's kind of one of his pipe dreams, he thinks that'd be awesome, and he thinks it'd be, also be good to have Sotaville available as a hub for emergency response if one of the dams in the area fails, because we're kind of higher up.
Yeah, we can sit up and watch water go by.
Exactly, yeah, we'll be fine.
I mean, we've already had the fires, it would be nice, thank God, people are close to us, us.
Good time to sell your book.
Can I?
There you go.
Say something?
Yeah.
Um, you know, you guys were talking about the radios and stuff, if, if we ever lose on your cellphone, you can put on your cellphone what's called signal, and it's run by the military, and you can get any type of communication, you can talk to one another in case of an emergency, and like, I've got it on my phone, because I know that if we have a, a power outage during anything like that, yeah, that's supposed to be coming, that, um, signal's a good thing to have, because it's the only way that you'll be able to communicate. Telegram, your internet, everything will be gone, the only thing you'll be able to use is signal.
And is that an app?
It's an app.
Is it just iOS, or is it Android, too, do you know?
Yes. Just go to Play Store and download, it's a round blue circle with white dots on the inside of it, signal, and you can, you can put all, it goes off all your contacts in your phone. It'll put all your contacts in there so you can communicate with your family.
Thank you, thanks. That's all.
Let's see, so other couple things that happened since I wrote the packet. Dina and I went to a meeting of all the other small cities in the area, and we talked a lot about, uh, kind of where, where things are at, where the legislative session's going next year, and we talked a lot about water, and we learned that a lot of people talk about us, apparently.
Oh, wow. They're like, oh, Sotaville, oh, yeah, we are, I'm like, why don't we? What is the infamous?
Apparently, we're a great case study for water policy, and how to deal with municipal water shortages, so, um, people just look at our history and talk about us, and figure, oh, this is what they did in Sotaville, so we can do it over there. But everybody's struggling with water shortages right now, and everybody needs infrastructure built to get water, so, we're not alone.
It was pretty crazy to hear the people say, God, we need a well, we need a well, we need a well, we need something for water, and I thought, I really kind of thought it was just us, but apparently, no.
It's gonna become a real problem.
Yes, it is.
Not just here, and not just local, yet worldwide.
Yes.
Worldwide, it's gonna become a problem, it already is.
Although there's water out there that we don't even know that's there, it, it's gonna be a problem in the short run for all of the world.
I know Suzie, when she was mayor, she brought up a thing where you can actually get water out of the atmosphere, even if it's not raining.
Mm-hmm. We looked into that. Yeah. I've actually put my name as 101 from my house, and I haven't heard anything from it, but I have a dehumidifier in my house.
Yeah.
And I get a lot of water almost every day, might dump it and put it on my plants, but, yeah, that was rather expensive, as I recall.
Lori looked into that quite a bit, too, when she was here.
But it may be an option down the road, hopefully not, but.
Let's see, which was it? MIT just advertised one yesterday for four to $6,000, or, that was, it's a desalination thing that we were talking about, so they, and it's, it fit on the tabletop.
I've seen it.
So.
California was big on that, the people were big on desalination, but the government said absolutely not. It's like, there's all that water right there, really?
They don't know what's best.
Anyway, um, yeah, and the other thing was that today I met with, um, so one of the people we met there was one of the, the state circuit writers with the OHA, they.
And that's not rodeo?
No, it's not rodeo, so, uh, they, basically, the, the state contracts with them and pays them every year a significant fee to just do very light, kind of, um, early engineering treatments for cities that need, um, just kind of some, a starting point for certain engineering projects. Um, so I, I didn't make any commitments or anything, obviously, I just wanted to meet with them, I'm like, what on earth are you doing? Always a good, so the, the company is called Civil West, I know they've worked with the city of Sotaville before, especially on the Intertie project, um, so it was just cool to kind of learn a little bit more about what they do and, uh, what a circuit writer does, um, and I talked a little bit about our, our water problems, that kind of thing. So, they are in that capacity, very, uh, you know, uh, very interested in helping us where they can, and of course, obviously, there's more of a sales pitch, because they want to, they want, they want, they want to be.
Within the door?
Yeah, exactly, so, and that, that was, you know, kind of very obvious, so it was, it was good to meet with them and learn and just kind of know what we can get, um, you know, through the state's paid program, but, uh, I guess the question that he was asking, that I wanted to know if we have an answer for is, do we have an engineer of record for the city, and do we want one?
We did, did Turelli, or am I thinking?
I think we've been using, I think we've been having, losing the one in Lebanon, been helping do, do our engineer work, but I was taken.
And the Intertie book, I think it lists which engineering company we tended to use in the, before time.
I thought I heard that the one that they used for the Intertie stepped away from the city.
Yeah, I, I don't know that they want to use us back, but I think those are the ones we had used before.
Yeah. Yeah.
Martin Bell, was it?
I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, well, they, they also like to do presentations to cities, so it'd be good to get them in here again and get JD talking with them, and, hello, hello.
Sorry, I'm late.
No worries.
How you doing?
Doing good.
All right.
So, yeah, that was basically all I had to say to that, so, any, any questions?
Just got to tell it. Okay, now, public works.
All right, we got a little bit to go through tonight. Um, city's wells produce about 522,546 gallons, city sold for 177,850, or, uh, loss of about nine percent, or just under nine percent. Um, the city requested bids for hauling water, and I contacted personally three local companies, and it was also posted on our website. Two companies responded, only one company responded in time. Um, Ray Jackman Repair was the one that responded in time, and you want me to tell you the amounts of the bids?
Well, we'll, we'll go over that during the R and B.
Do that later, okay. So, we'll go over that a bit later, then. Um, radio meet, read meters were installed today and yesterday. There are, I believe, six of them that were not installed because of improper plumbing to them, um, mostly on the customer's side, I think one, maybe two, was on our side. Uh, it would be my recommendation that we just hire a plumber and fix all of them, and that way, it's done and over with. Otherwise, we have to have the homeowners that have, on their side, have a plumber come out and fix them, and then we gotta battle with them to get it done and keep on track with them. I'm gonna say it just goes ahead while we have the extra money from the meters.
That's what I was gonna ask you, we have extra funds and that, and grants?
So, I would just say, it would be my suggestion that we go ahead and hire a plumber, just take care, it'll be done with it.
You need a motion for that?
No.
So, absent those six, is everything else done in the city?
Yeah.
Wow, that's quick. And when did you start?
Yesterday. Yesterday.
That's what all the orange lines on the screen.
Really?
Yeah, it came through yesterday with the section thing, you know, our boxes, and today they went through, put all the meters in, just about.
A little over half yesterday, just under half today. Had a couple crews going, lead crew was sucking, and the second area crew was putting in.
Is that what that pickup was, when you were on your, like, four, giving, oh, maybe, yesterday, over in front of that lady's house?
I took the lawnmower down to move one of the lids that we couldn't get many, but, yeah.
So, when will they actually be functional, you'll be reading them, now already?
I've been reading them today, practicing.
That's exciting.
It'll be, um, in two weeks, Tim, the owner of the company, he will come back or get in contact with me, and he will show me how to look for leaks on the system. After two weeks, he says that gives you enough input to do that, and if they had some that they installed, they're a little loose and dripping, we'll go back and fix them and tighten them at that time as well. So, the water situation for, or the numbers for next month are gonna be a little harder to figure out because of that, so, yeah, they're all but five, six, or I think they're in and running.
So, if you've got somebody that thinks that they've got a leak, then what do they need to do with the new meter to find out whether they do or not?
Contact me, and then we'll, we'll look into it, or I'll look into it, as best I can at this time, yeah.
You can still look at the meter, though, and see it clicking away, though, right?
No.
No?
No, you can look at it, and I can't remember, I want to say it's every 90 seconds, it'll update the, every 45 seconds, it sends a signal out for meter to be able to read, um, but I think it's every 90 that it changes the display on the, with the crystal display. So, you can look at it today, and look at it in a couple hours, or tomorrow, and just kind of, you know, go day to day for a couple days, and see if you got something weird going on that way. Otherwise, I can go up to it, I can pull all the information for 180 days out of it, they haven't been there that long, obviously, but up to 180 days, and see what's going on with that.
And the mud coming out of my faucets was normal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had a few that found out that they have little screens on their faucets that they need to clean out occasionally, so.
Can I ask a question about the meters? So, we, we generally go out and read our meter, like, say, once a week?
When you see me on the camera?
No, no. No, when, when we, so we know how much water we're using, if we need to cut back.
It's still got a gauge on it, it just doesn't turn all the time like the new ones do, or the old ones do.
So, if we read it once a week, and it has a different reading, and we can just minus the numbers, and?
Yep.
Okay. That's all I wanted to, thank you.
I, I just want to remark that it's incredible that we got this finally done. This has been a rope that's been pushed uphill now, four months and months and months, and I just want to applaud all the work that's gone towards it.
Couple of years.
Couple of years now we've been talking, but, yeah, come on, months severely.
Next thing I have was, it would be a good idea for us, and I've talked a little bit with Jeff, to get a new PLC, PLC system, programmable logic control system, to run the water system up there. What we have is all outdated and no longer supported, so, that's something we need to seriously consider, and I think Alex has got some funding that we might be able to use for that.
Yeah, so, in the budget for next year, we have at least $30,000 dedicated to it. I'm pretty sure we're gonna have about $5,000 or so left over from the SB 5561, uh, uh, funds, now that the meter program's included, so I think that probably will give us about $35,000 next year that could be used for that, so.
And we were thinking probably about 30.
Yeah, I think it'll probably at least come in right around there. I mean, depending on the programming and stuff like that, because it's all gonna have to be completely reprogrammed, um, it's a different language that, that it's gotta go through, and, you know, I would suggest putting in a small switch out there to communicate to a couple of freak drives that it's running, and, and, uh, you know, the panel view, panel view is obsolete as well, you know, it's a panel view six, and they no longer support them, so, to get a different one, you're gonna have to go to a panel view seven, which, once again, it's a different language, so, yeah, I mean, at 35,000, I, the hardware's probably gonna run you in a 20,000 some odd, and then probably about 10,000 for programming, so. And I would suggest going to at least a processor, uh, L72, Studio 5000 software is what you're gonna need, and that'll get you to where you can run a firmware up to version 30, which they're up to firmware version 32 right now, so, and they go fast.
Yeah, and that's something I can contact our electrician closer, you know, I'll, I'll contact him in a month or so, because we're looking at next fiscal, or annual fiscal season, um, I will contact him and get more of an idea on pricing from him.
You can call North Coast, too, because they're the distributor for Allen Bradley PLCs, and they're out of Albany. Just ask for Aaron Michaels, and, and, uh, he's their inside sales guy, and just, you can use my name, I've been using Aaron for 30 years.
I'll write it back to you on that.
Like I say, they'll give you, they'll give you pricing and stuff for the PLCs and stuff. We can go up there and look at all the cards and figure out exactly what kind of cards, because most of your cards are gonna run about, you know, $3,500 per card. Processor is gonna run you five to 6,000, so, I mean, that's the most expensive one, more likely, but.
Well, maybe I'll get with you next month when you're on call or something, and?
Just go through it and figure out what we're gonna need.
If you don't mind.
No, not at all.
Um, next on to parks, vegetation is and has been cut between rain showers. Um, I got some weeds that need to be taken care of all over the place. Had a tree feller come and look at the trees in the parks, not soon enough, because there's a big limb that just fell down today, but, um, the maple tree over in the little park across the street has some dead stuff on it that he strongly suggests that we get rid of, have them or somebody else cut it off, and then he looked at trimming a couple of the other limbs on some, and getting rid of five of the suckers down below, the three I think were dead. But he wanted considerable amount of money, and he didn't really want the job, because he's out of Philomath. He just happened to be in the area, he said to look, he couldn't recommend anybody over here, but to look for somebody closer to.
Bless your spirit.
So, I will look for somebody closer to Sweet Home Lebanon area that does tree balling, or. No, you're fine, what?
Oh, I got a number I can give you.
Okay, that'd be awesome. So, yeah, we'll look at that. There's been a suggestion or a request to look at putting in a putt-putt disc golf course around our parks instead of a big nine-hole golf, disc golf course, just do a putting green, basically, one. I got with Lynn County Parks, because they have one over in Waterloo in their park, and they said that they had nothing to do with that, that Albany Disc Club paid for everything, they came out and did all the brush, did all the work and everything, so, I might, if the council doesn't have an issue with it, I might look to them to see if they'd be willing to come over here and do something like that for us.
I have two questions.
Yep.
Disc golf is the, and then, um, what about our liability if somebody flip trips falls?
They're gonna be, it'd be the same as it is in our parks already, I'm sure, so.
I asked you about that before I put the park, you know, over there, if we was, if we was gonna have a liability insurance, liability for that, because all the schools took all the playground stuff out, because it's, like, you know, for short reasons.
Is there really enough room for that over there?
For, uh, it would, what my vision is, is have two or three holes down here, one or two up here, and then maybe two or three over there, or one over there, and a couple, three or four here, and something. Because it's just a putting course, it's not an actual driving course, so.
They would know better than we would.
Yeah. But if you guys aren't opposed to the idea, I would like to look into it further.
I think that's cool.
I think it'd be awesome. I can't see putting with a disc, I keep thinking.
It's sort of like a grizzly.
And they have a basket that you throw into.
I've seen it, but putting and that just don't.
Yeah.
They're special discs, heavier than a regular.
Anything, 32.
Different designs for short and long discs.
Yeah, I think it's 78 to 32 feet from the post is considered putting.
Yeah, I'm something new every day. Pretty cool.
Getting more people, and then we're really gonna need a copy shop.
Streets, um, a tree was removed from Vine and Park with the help of Perry's equipment and him and his son's help. I did not get our tractor down to Vine Street, um, or Fisher, um, but I did find out on Lynn County, and I'm gonna look at doing this next fiscal year again while we have the money, because we're too close now to kind of squeeze the funds out and make everything okay without it being a big headache.
For the road grading, you mean?
Yeah, for the grading there, according to the required, the paper I have in front of me, the rate is $70 for the first half hour and $110 after that, so, for them to come down and grade that, probably a couple hours, so, and they have, they're more set up for that than we are. And that's an option.
We don't have a whole lot of streets anymore we need to grade, and, and there's, got a couple of maybe.
But that Fisher, Fisher needs a park, the corner of Park, and Vine's really soft and bad, that needs some love, um, yeah.
Running Rock Street across there, I think it's got some bad spots in it, too, I'm thinking.
Yeah, and then, we need to figure out something on Vine and Knoll down in that area, where it used to be oil mat or something down there.
Yeah.
It's all, it's horrible, so.
Yeah, I know, that, that road's a mess, and, you can't, gravel on it, you can't put asphalt, you have to either scrape it up, put asphalt in it, or just get that coat patch, put it in there, and that doesn't last. or just get that coat patch and put it there, and that doesn't last very long.
The only other thing I have is, I would, I would like to ask that whoever's on call, on duty, whatever you wanna call it, try to put some charge on the phone Sunday nights, that way I, I'm able to use it Monday morning. I'm gonna look at getting a, some double cigarette lighter and some other stuff for the pickup, means I gotta keep the radio read meter stuff charged and be able to charge the phone in that pickup too. But if, if I could get it back with a little charge on it, it would be helpful. So that's all I have, any questions?
I have a question on that phone, I, I got the cord, but the, this part that charges actually, that's the part that really determines whether the phone takes the charge or not, isn't it? Part it plugs in?
Most people will plug it into their computer.
Yeah.
Not any of you that think.
I got a computer, I could, I could.
I'm talking about the people using this phone.
Yeah, it's a digital phone, I know.
I'm not talking about any phone in general.
But, uh, like I said, I've got, I've got, I've got a plug-in ports for, for one-ten's, but even myself, when I use, some of the chargers will not charge it. They charge it, it's no percent, I mean, you can plug it in for five dollars.
Or take it back dead from you, it's okay.
I'm just saying, I mean, I said, I will try it.
Yeah, if, if somebody can help with that, it's great, if not, that's.
Yeah, I just, I just, I just wondered if you had, if you had that special, that sort of docked plug-in port. I don't.
I don't know about, I plugged it in a minute, wanted to do an update on it.
Yeah.
You didn't plug into my computer, out, out of my computer is, it's probably de, de, deprogram this thing.
Is there a pin for that? I mean, if somebody leaves a text or something like that, is there a way to get in there to see it, or?
Yeah, yeah.
Teenage.
Oh, yeah. If somebody calls, yeah. If you gotta look at a voicemail or something, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I, I didn't know that when I had it, I went, nobody called, but good thing, because I couldn't open it up to see.
You can always call me on my phone and get that information.
Yeah, I would've.
All it kept doing to me is wanting to do the updates.
I hadn't had that problem, so thank you for taking care of that.
Yeah.
We like plugged it in and charged it up, then it shut itself off and updated itself, so.
Oh, it's ready, let's do that.
That's an eighteen thing for you.
I don't know what's gonna act like on me this weekend, we'll find out.
But, you know, it's pretty cool, Roger, and they were ringing all weekend long.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It rang a couple times just today.
Have a good time at, at the, at the festival, or you got a, this is coming weekend, isn't it?
It's this weekend, yeah.
I went down to visit my daughter over there last weekend, so.
Give me the number, I'll call them.
Call mine.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I had actually one more thing I wanted to add. Our audit for the last fiscal year is basically about done, so finally at long last. So I believe that next city council meeting will have to review it and approve it, but that's, uh.
Wow.
That's that, yeah.
It made it a lot easier since, since our auditor, auditor works, our accountant here works the auditor office, we keep things.
No, it's a different company.
Different company?
Yes. Yeah, that's usually recommended.
But they work together.
Yeah, they, yeah, they know each other.
They have a relationship.
They do have a good relationship, yeah, so that was one other thing to add. Okay.
On to new business. Yeah. New business, resolution twenty-two dash oh-four, adopted ordinance twenty, uh, adopted ordinance twenty-two oh-one.
Yep. So this was looking at some amendments to our city zoning ordinance. Based on conversations we had last night, the council voted to initiate an amendment, and these are the amendments. They were reviewed by the attorney and the attorney gave us his blessing. So we had a few different things. So first off is a, a notice of hearing, so right now the notice of a hearing for a zoning and development ordinance is in, uh, chapter eight, which doesn't exist, so we delete the references to chapter eight and say that we are going to just use the same notification for ordinances that's listed in the city charter rather than a fictitious chapter. Ones that come in additionally, I removed a reference to the city administrator, since that position no longer exists, and put it in there with myself. We wanted to update the fee schedule, the, uh, fee, when the, last time there was a change, the zoning ordinance referred to ordinance eleven oh-seven, which has been, uh, since superseded by ordinance seventeen oh-one for a different fee schedule, so, um, we're not going to reference a, an abolished fee schedule in the ordinance anymore. And then there is a consideration to, uh, allow additional six months requests for, um, somebody who, oh, actually, so we are going to integrate properly, uh, the section about living in an RV, uh, to this, so that's what this ordinance does. We are also going to add in the additional six months extensions if there's a national emergency of some sort, and that is written in there. An additional change in that section, um, we're making sure that we're referencing, uh, this section rather than a different one, so we just, it was section four oh-three-two, now I, I deleted a reference to four oh-three-two in there and replaced it with three point one oh-eight, because this is going to become section three point one oh-eight. Uh, and then lastly, we add section three point one oh-nine, which is temporary use of a recreational vehicle due to, uh, economic hardship. So I just put some language in there, um, and the attorney said that was okay. And our council president had a question about how do we assess economic hardship? My idea was to look at, require anybody to submit any documents that were submitted for other public assistance to verify that they are suffering from economic hardship in order to approve it. Anybody have any thoughts on that? Do we want to do a specific type of public assistance, or we just want to leave it open to?
I don't know that we can capture everything that might physically be out there.
I think we ought to leave it open for interpretation at time, right?
Yeah, depending on the discretion of the council.
Okay.
One comment about that.
Sure.
In, in, you're talking about one oh-nine, right?
Yes.
Okay. Can you put somewhere in there, um, hardship and safety of children?
Safety of children?
Yes.
That would fall under hardship, I believe.
Well, because.
Well, it does say specifically economic hardship.
Okay.
So.
My home is a, a safety zone for three little girls, and, um, I just want to make sure that that is, they know that that's their safe place, and you can look at them right in your eye and ask them, where's your safe place? And it's, Pagan Ridge's.
But will they be living in an RV?
They're, they live in and out of my house.
But do they live in an RV?
This is, this is specifically about RVs.
Right.
Yeah, so this.
They play, they, they store the clothes, things like that.
So it wouldn't have anything to do with living in your house.
Yeah, they, they can do that all they want.
And that's awesome.
Yeah, we, we support helping people out, yeah. Uh, just so you know, the, the ordinance was posted everywhere we're supposed to be, and there were copies available in City Hall, uh, during regular office hours, and that means we are allowed to pass this with a reading by title only if we prefer. So.
So what do you need from this one?
So there would need to be a motion that the ordinance be read by title only and adopted.
I'll make a motion that we read the ordinance by title only for adoption.
Got a second on that?
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, before we do that, I have to read it by title.
Okay.
That was just on the motion.
Yeah.
So I'll jump in again, I'm gonna get out of your.
All right. Won't be as long as last time. All right, this is ordinance twenty-two oh-one, amending ordinance nineteen oh-two, City of Sotaville zoning and development ordinance. Shorter titled than the last one. Mr. Mayor, the ordinance has been read by title.
So now we need to make a motion to pass it, right?
Uh, no, so the motion, the, the motion was to read by title only and then, um, adopt it. So now we can call a roll call vote on that. Or if we could just say, all in favor, aye.
All in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, no comment, okay, that's all.
Yeah. That's sad.
Okay, next we got, uh, Mr. Contract Review Board, Community Services Consortium.
And I gave you your, uh, your cheat sheets.
Okay, I gotta read all this too?
So.
Okay, I gotta gavel again, okay. Call a total public hearing, City of Sotaville, Contract Review Board at, uh.
Seven forty-two.
Seven forty-two. Okay, we got staff, staff, staff discussion request, the city to court review the contract, uh, con, content, contract.
Yeah, so, uh, we talked about last time, this Community Services Consortium is a nonprofit, kind of government service, catch-all agency in Albany that serves Lynn County and the area. Uh, and one of the programs they provide is utility billing assistance, uh, so that, uh, they, they serve a lot of people with different utility billings. Water utility billing specifically needs to be made through an agreement with the city council. So, uh, they provided us with a contract that was given to everybody to agree to and approve. So once that happens, the agreement is signed, we basically allow them to take over paying anybody's utility bills if they need help or they are in their ears and need help that way, so.
Is that a tie?
Any questions?
I, I did notice that it did say in their rears, so that was nice. And you, you still believe the fact that Lynn County, that it's not on there was just a typo?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
So to understand this, we need to approve, to have somebody allow the consortium to.
Pay their water bill.
To pay their water bill?
Yeah.
They can't just go and work with them themselves?
No.
Because we have to agree to.
To accept.
They're on their behalf.
Checks are going to be written by the consortium.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
So we need to, as a, as a contract.
And if you read the contract, there's real specifics about if it's overpaid, if the person dies, if they're no longer in service, and so.
Yeah.
I understand that, so what do you need from us?
Which one's this, three? Three.
Ten B, Contract Review Board.
Ten B, yep.
So can we just do the suggested motion?
Yeah, all right, so we had council discussion, and my step is requesting a public comment.
Comment on, on contract, any public comment about this?
About the consortium?
Yeah, yeah.
Doesn't have to be public comment, I mean, it's just, if anyone, if, if anybody wants to talk, then that was, that was the chance. If not, we're all good, okay. All right, uh, then you will close the public hearing on this contract.
I close the public hearing on this con, on this contract? Is there any council staff discussions about this?
Nope.
Okay, I'll take, we, we take a motion, entertain, entertain a motion to vote to approve the contract.
I move to adopt the contract for water assistance provisions between Community Services Consortium and City of Sotaville.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. City, city council meeting resumes.
Uh, well, the, we are still in the Contract Review Board section, we just closed the public hearing on that contract. The next item is a contract with Ray Jackman Repair.
Oh.
So.
Okay.
We will, we will call forward a public hearing on a new contract while we are still in session as the Contract Review Board. And then once that item is done, then we will resume the city council. You will have to gavel in a new public hearing for, um, this contract, but not for the session.
Okay.
I know, it's fun, right?
Now we open a meet, open a contract review for Ray Jackman Repair to be allowed to haul water for the City of Sotaville when we're out of water this summer.
Okay, you said you were gonna discuss what JD had to say about.
The bids that I received.
And everything?
Yes.
Okay, we received two bids for the water hauling, um, one from, obviously, Ray Jackman Repair, and another one a day late from No Drought. No Drought's proposal was to charge us three hundred and fifty dollars an hour plus fuel surcharge to haul the water. Ray Jackman Repair is to, is, is to charge us a hundred and thirty dollars with a fuel surcharge. So No Drought is offering to charge us two point seven times higher than Ray Jackman, and No Drought did not get their paperwork in on time on top of that. So I suggest that we go with Ray Jackman Repair. Would, last year, just for knowledge, the trucking companies, um, charged between one twenty-five and one thirty-five an hour, except for they were not reliable. And we ended up going to what people have since started calling the ant farms. And those were charging, for the two of them, a hundred bucks an hour apiece, so that was two hundred bucks an hour. So this bid is still better than that, but it's comparable with what everybody else was doing last year.
How many hours a week were they hauling during our driest time?
They were hauling, they were hauling about eight hours a day, two days a week, but they were charging us ten hours a day.
Because they have to drive from Philomath.
Yeah.
But basically, they were hauling up to here for sixteen hours a week.
Right.
At how many gallons, two thousand per?
Those, those were sixteen fifty, I think, their tanks.
Sixteen hundred?
Yeah.
What is your tank?
Forty-six.
Forty-six.
Forty-six hundred.
And the one that No Drought was talking about is fifty-two hundred, but he's also got smaller ones, so he potentially be using back and forth between small and big.
And I bet you, Jackmans won't leave.
They all, they all do, they all have vents. They're not, those trucks aren't baffled, so they can stay clean without getting contaminated.
Right.
So, and without the baffles, you have to.
It's not worth it.
Yeah.
You have to vent them.
Yeah.
Or you'll turn them inside out.
Yeah. With pressure differences and stuff, yeah.
And it's very conditions, temperatures, hot, stuff, will break apart.
Uh, any questions on the bids from council?
So you all have a time to review the contract that was drafted?
And you've made the edit on the year?
Yeah, so as amended, the twenty-twenty-two.
You said you did have a contract in there?
Yeah, it was in the council packet.
Center in this envelope, yeah?
Yes.
You can sign it, it's out, you know, this is the twenty-twenty.
Yeah, so we will be approving the contract as amended, so, Mr. Jackman, not council, for this purpose of this item. So we will be approving the contract as amended with that year change from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-two. If there are any amendments you'd like to propose, we can consider those as well, so.
Yeah, look at that, and this is the whole thing.
Yeah.
Okay. You need a little time to review, is that okay, or do you need an answer right now?
Take a break for ten minutes? Do you have the mayor's eye with that?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask, uh, request a real big favor? I just got out of surgery on my prostate, and if at all possible, I would like to speak to the water committee right back here.
Yeah.
And let me get the heck out of here.
So.
We can't really do it now, can we?
Yeah, so we can table this item while Ray is reading.
Okay.
And then, um, we can move to the next one, and then.
So, I have make a, wait, I just tell, gotta table, table this.
Uh, you say, uh, you moved to recess the Contract Review Board.
Okay, I moved to recess the Contract Review Board for some other business. Okay.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next.
Let's be, yeah, yeah.
Uh, so let's just open up item eleven A.
Thank you.
Yep, so that is the, the water waiver request, so I finally found the city's old water ordinance, it's primarily from nineteen eighty-two, and there are, um, app, so the, it says about a special contract, is that in a, somebody can apply for water requirements that are unusual or large, and that would be how we are allowed to extend, uh, to a city resident, a change to kind of the other rules about water use, so.
In reading this, the only thing on that that I would like to either change or include, uh, this would be, not be a new well, it would be an upgrade of existing well.
Okay.
Feast water, feast water only and stuff, enough for a cooking up to the state house, or just?
No, this would be just strictly used for irrigation purposes.
Yeah.
Just to be nosy, but do, what do you grow? Do you grow a big crop, or do you just have a great garden?
I have a great garden and a very large lawn.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, it was about ten acres or so down there, I think, something like that, but.
Six and a half, of course.
Huh? Six and a half, okay. I know there's quite a lot of acreage down in there, and then, to the back of the trees. Huh, six and a half, okay, I know there's quite a lot of acreage down in there and then just back in the trees.
Yeah.
I'd like to water my lawn.
So.
So what?
Yeah, so right now, because it's been since the eighties, since I think this has been touched, we don't actually have special contracts in place that can be used. So what needs to be done is I need to write one up and the city council needs to approve a special contract and the city attorney also needs to approve it. And then we can sign it with Mr. Heineken, that'll be that, so. I wanted to split that up so we'd make sure we know what the special contract is going to be about, so it can be written and approved by everybody.
Now what you gotta, you gotta re-drill the well or you're just gonna hook it back up or aren't you?
Ah, yes. I'm going to do what is necessary, I have two wells on my property. I'm going to do what is necessary to provide water for the irrigation of the wife's garden and that other part of it. And she had, we have a lot of property in there that we.
So if we've got a well that's already working, it's an old well, but it's already working?
Ah, yeah, it's an old well, I'll take it that way.
So I'm talking about mine.
Oh, yours, yeah, yeah, that's same for our situation, yeah.
I've got two on my property also, so it's gonna be a, we're gonna have to, a lot of the cities will probably use this. For irrigation or fire prevention, I'm on with my fire prevention basically. And you had that fire up on the hill, it's got a little too, it's getting a little too close to my, my domain, and I will not leave my stuff, I'll die with it first.
So now I'm, I'm thinking that this probably isn't going to be measured by our city meters, which means that's not really a contract that we need to enter into.
There, there are others out there that have private wells, as long as they're not hooked up to the water system or to residents, it shouldn't be an issue, it should be a non-issue in my eyes. There are other people, especially down in that area, that have their own private wells that they do use for irrigation.
Yeah.
There are a lot of wells.
We didn't have the water, state of water system until nineteen eighty and city incorporated eighteen, eighteen eighty, so.
The main thing is they're not hooked to their house and there's no way of cross-contamination back flowing into our system.
So in, go ahead.
The original Roger and Ray can verify this, there was an original addendum to the charter where there was prohibiting new wells. Or repairing old wells at one time, am I, am I correct?
I believe so, when they put the water system in, they want to do that, they want to force people onto the water system.
Right, and evidence gentleman hasn't been able to find that exact thing, but this is basically what it would be, and it would be for people like you or myself. That have wells that need assistance, need to be upgraded or. And not necessarily just finding drilling new wells, but just upgrading the system wells that people have on their property and allow them to take them usable and reduce the demand on the water of the city of Sotaville.
So I have two questions, I could have sworn that in the before time, I was told that there was the idea of not having people use the wells because it would contaminate with the, our city's wells. But also because it would hurt the water table for our city wells, is that still an issue?
Okay, the water table for our city wells is all uphill. And we draw all of our water from four wells, I guess it is now, is it four or three?
Four.
Four, and those wells are upstream from the areas that we're talking about and doing this thing.
We don't really have control over that anyways, cause we know we're such a small area that all the surrounding areas, the farms, the, you know, the place up here by.
All the homes.
The diamond.
What happened when the city of Sotaville.
They all suck out of our, so we don't have control of it anyways.
What happened when the city of Sotaville put in the original wells, they did not, and it was a big mistake. Put in for water rights or water protection on those wells and as a result.
It's under the water too.
And as a result, a lot of housing and stuff is built upstream from our water. And that's why the city of Sotaville has so much problem with their water right now, is because there is an awful lot of, there's golf courses built, there was a, a lot of homes that went in and have set wells up. That are drawing upstream from our water reserves here in the city. And that's why the, you have the problem you have today. The wells down here in the lower city draw off of, I believe, a different aquifer, if I'm not mistaken. But, but anyhow, they are downstream from our wells that the city uses. So what, what, what we're talking about here would have no effect on the wells that the city is drawing from.
So then, do we need to make a differentiation, I live on Westview, my neighbor asked me about putting a well in for irrigation.
Yeah.
So can he put in a new well for irrigation?
That, that's something you would have to decide, I'm, like I say, just reading the work.
They should have that, right?
Says if you need a well, you need to apply for the thing.
Through the city.
We need to talk about this being location specific, that it's not everybody in the city of Sotaville, right?
Well, I would say it would be, people that this would involve would be anyone, the very majority of the people are downhill from the aquifer that we're drawing the city of water off of.
That.
Yeah, our deepest, our deepest, deepest well as well, level one up there is two hundred and fifty feet, but down here, you're five hundred feet below that, just, or not quite that, but pretty close.
So then my neighbor, he lives right next to me on Westview, if he wants to do a new well, I don't know, I don't think he has a well, but if he wants to do a new well.
He needs to apply, that's what it says.
Then that'll go through the county too.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, it's just.
Like I say, what I'm doing is just refurb, refurbishing old wells and refurbishing old wells down in the, below the aquifer.
But if somebody in your area or your area, and I'm sorry, I don't know where you guys live, wanted to do a new well, would you have to apply?
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah, you would, you would have to apply to put any well in, in the city.
Put any new one.
You do, yeah, I think you gotta do that anywhere, not only in Sotaville, but.
Like I say.
Out on a farm.
But to refurbish what you already have.
Yeah, refurbish what we're doing for, I'm on board.
Thank you, I can answer that question.
Answer any questions?
About everybody.
Oh, really?
Nobody up at the door saying that, that's a farm, that's a farm, that's a water system. Where you're at.
So just to make sure, it sounds like we're just gonna let you rehab your, your old well and then.
Okay.
Be on your way.
Be on your way.
Well, thank you very much for your patience and for your letting me get through this thing because the day's been an interesting day.
Yeah.
Very good act. The only thing I was interested is that when he does it, that somebody from the city probably may go down and verify that it's not in any way hooked up to our system.
Not gonna.
Oh, yeah, that, that is something that is required, that is, you have to have, and that would be something if I were the city, I would be doing.
Right.
Thank you, Nick.
Thanks, Nick.
You're welcome.
My wife will be happy.
Why's that?
I will, I'll let her get it tuned up this summer. We can water it tomorrow.
We just built that rad garden last summer, that's all she wants.
We did, I mean, all the properties up here are a well before they put city water in, that's what they have, I have a well.
Since we've been so hardcore about, you know, not using outside water, you know, people. Bringing up concerns about this, that perhaps we need to put something in our newsletter or our site that clarifies this, so when you're watering and people aren't, so that people aren't like, well, how come he's watering, he's wasting water? You know, just to be proactive.
Well, I think, I leave it alone, let people call and complain, then I go in and inspect it. And make sure that they are doing it with their own private well, that's what we've been doing in the past, I think that's what we need to say.
Yeah. I think, I think that's true too, because I got my two wells, I, I've been watering my trees around my property down there, my old piece property off one of my, and a 35 foot, but.
That one fellow that used to be on council who owns the trailer across from me, he was running a freaking hose from his well all the way to the freaking old Yoder House. I mean, he did that for two, two summers straight, I was surprised that no one even noticed it. Before me, but. I don't know his name.
Doug.
Yeah. I mean, that, that well has been up and running for a while. And there's several of them down there that I had complaints on last year, they're using the water, so I'd go down and look at it, they're using their own private well, it's totally fine, it's not hooked up to the city in any way.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, so. City water.
Oh, yeah.
That's good for your.
You, you, mine have water too, it's a iron.
We need to go back.
Uh, Ray, did you read the contract?
Yeah, the only thing that I don't like is I need the fuel surcharge to be adjustable.
Yeah.
For fuel prices.
Yeah.
Oh, you think they're gonna go up, she says with a tongue in cheek.
Had my fuel bill the other day, yeah, they went up.
That's nothing to do with council, but if anybody could explain to me on the same gas that they pump into the tanks at a gas station, how come one day it costs more than the next day?
Based off the futures market.
Yeah, it's all speculation.
It makes no sense to anybody except for the ones making billions of dollars.
It didn't go up, so.
It's all based on speculation.
You're not supposed to be smart enough to figure out that's what they're doing.
What doesn't make sense is, you know, that they said that, you know, they have a issue with all the drilling and permits and stuff for the oil companies to produce it because of the carbon and stuff. But then they decided not to use the high octane gas during summer and just go with the polluted shit, that's why your gas mileage is down four miles a gallon. So you're getting less gas mileage, but you're paying higher, higher prices for it.
So we'll strike where it says five percent fuel surcharge and instead say with a fuel sur, an adjustable fuel surcharge?
Yes, that would be the only thing.
Should there be a cap on it though?
No, because it's based on the fuel.
It's based on the fuel.
You gotta, he's gotta pay, he's gotta make, he's gotta be able to pay for his fuel.
It's based out of, at the pump, basically what's happening.
There's, there's a formula that you go online.
Yeah, the feds have a formula for it.
That you figure your surcharge for fuel.
Right.
It's a government-based, next amount of dollars for fuel and then how much you charge per mile.
I was just saying that, you know, not, not just you, but any contractor can't come in and just say, well, I'm gonna charge twenty-five percent surcharge, like, no.
What was the other one, what was your surcharge?
Right?
Working on No Droughts.
You know, at least you put a cap on it.
Schedule week delivery, day deliveries, plus fuel charge, fuel surcharge will be added anytime fuel is above three dollars a gallon threshold.
Which we haven't seen three dollars a gallon.
Two years.
Trump was in office. His goes on even more on the depth than that.
Yeah, he's coming back, he's coming back.
The council should read that.
You guys want a copy of it?
For pleasure reading, perhaps.
Do you want it today, do you want Alex to print them off right now or?
I, I would like to read it at some point, it'd be ed- edumacated.
If you're the only one who cares, when you're done, if you can get it back to me.
Okay.
So I think we're just gonna prove it, right?
Yeah, move it as amended with the, the change from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two and then with adjustable fuel surcharge.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion to accept this, water, water plantation service agreement as amended. Ray, you have to abstain, of course, from the vote.
Make a motion that we accept, it's not a resolution, is it?
Just the contract.
The contract from ten C, from the review board for Ray Jackman Repair to run our potable water. For twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
As amended.
As amended.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, you gotta, you say you abstain?
Besides.
Okay.
This vote, okay.
Just so we know, Councilor Jackman will not be allowed to vote on the budget or any supplemental budgets for the next fiscal year because that is when he will be engaged in that contract. But that doesn't really restrict anything else he does, so.
That means I don't have to come to the budget meeting.
You're gonna have a free dinner.
Hey now, it's a certainly honorable.
Yeah, I believe if you're, if you're required to abstain, you may still be allowed to make some comments on the budget.
Exactly.
Uh, it's just the, the voting, so that's you, you can even submit some in writing. Uh, one of our budget, well, it's the next item we're at, right, Budget Committee Overview, so.
Okay, I guess next, we'll hang on to that.
Yep, so that's the Budget Committee.
Budget. Okay.
So only thing to add to this one is that we do have one vacancy, uh, now that's for twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-three. And city resident, former councillor, Mr. Anthony Morales has, uh, said he's interested in being on the budget meeting, so if the mayor would like to nominate him, uh, we can.
Okay, nominate Anthony Morales for being on a budget committee?
Thanks, Hagen.
Uh, so there, there does need, there needs to be a motion to approve the nomination in a second, so.
Need a motion to approve the nomination?
Yeah, I know.
What the heck was that?
So the city charter gives the, the mayor the authority to, to nominate people to committees and then the council the authority to approve or disapprove the nominations. So even though he's, uh, this is different than your council president nomination where anybody can nominate in second. Here, there's just an extra step of Roger has to nominate somebody and then the councillors among themselves has to say whether or not, uh, they want to, one, vote on him and then to, uh, vote on him after that. So, well, what we're doing right now is that Roger has submitted a nomination for a city committee to the council. A member of the council has to move the nomination and another member has to second it in order for it to be voted upon.
And I can't have anything to do with the budget, so I can't vote.
Actually, you can vote for budget committee members, uh, it's just voting on the actual budget itself, so.
I move that we accept the nomination of Anthony Morales to the budget committee for.
Woo-hoo.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries.
Now we gotta vote on him?
No, 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 we, we just.
We have to vote on voting on him, and then after we vote about voting on him, then we'll vote.
Holy smokes, we're gonna be on this subject the rest of the night.
You can't do that twice.
Okay, so now we're down to old business, water waiver.
And that was what we just did with, yeah, so.
Okay, we're done with water waiver, okay.
Oh, you have to say you closed the hearing with the contract, if you were, by the way.
I gotta.
Actually, we figured that out, never mind.
We're down, okay. Okay, so now we're down to old business?
You gotta close the thing.
Yep, got one out.
I'll close the meeting first?
No, one, one second.
We're done. Guess not for this.
Good.
Like I say, I'm not good at this.
We know that.
You're doing great, Roger.
We're awesome for stepping up.
I know, no one else wants it, right?
Here's the superstar, we appreciate you.
Okay, yeah, so the next one is just public comment, so.
Yep.
I just wanna thank everybody for doing a great job.
Oh.
Thank you.
I'd like to add to that and tell you guys that you, you are doing a great job and there's a lot getting done. And I think a lot, pardon me for saying this, but I think a lot of it is Alex.
That was someone that knows this, someone that researches what we need to know in the city, gets back on what it's supposed to be.
Gets back on track.
Yeah.
Gets back on track.
I think JD's done a fine job.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I, I wasn't done yet. I mean, I think the two people.
We got a good team, we got a very good team here.
Okay, you said it.
Yeah, very good team.
Okay, shut up Peggy.
It's okay.
I couldn't do this without JD, so thank you.
So you guys are awesome, all of you are awesome, seriously.
Thank you.
Okay, we got a council reports.
Actually, I'd like to talk about the meeting that Alex and I went to, I didn't wanna go, but since JD was unable, I felt there, somebody needed to represent the city with Alex. And it was, it was a very good meeting, um, I learned a lot and I think it was good to have representation. One of the things that they brought up was looking at community engagement and what increase it was when they went online and had these broadcasts. And trust me, I am the last person in this room who wants my fat little face on any kind of a computer or any kind of, you know, Facebook or YouTube or whatever. But I really think we need to move forward with getting into that.
So are you saying live streaming?
Something live streaming our meeting, because I know when I commuted to Eugene to work in the hospital, I could never make it to the meetings because it was so late. Yes.
Perfect idea, you can be the one filming it so you're behind the camera and just turning it to whoever's talking.
I throw two cameras in the army with my face, so I really think that we need to consider that.
To Microsoft Teams, that's what we use for our PFAC meetings for our doctors' offices, which is really cool.
Oh, yeah, I've used tons, but I, I do have my own paid Zoom account and.
There you go.
Carry live stream equipment with me twenty-four seven, so we can do that whenever the council wants to start. If we wanna do that, uh, starting with the budget meeting next week, we can make that happen, that's just.
That's too early, I say wait till next fiscal year.
Till the beginning of the fiscal year?
No.
Whoever.
You can be me in the camera.
If you're running the camera.
Yeah.
No, I, I set that up and it's just, it stays in the corner and that's that.
Right, well, this is the thing, if she's gonna run the camera, then she's gonna be really busy because everybody trying to talk, it's just gonna be like.
It's all in the room.
It'll be different than I am now.
There'll be a blur in this, blur in the camera lens.
Then we'll really screw with you, I'll have Jeff down, down here.
So do you have a preference for when you'd like to start that?
It's your idea.
I, you know, there's no time to suffer like the present, so maybe with next month's meeting?
You can start next council meeting?
I cannot lose twenty pounds by then, so overall.
Yeah, and the cool thing is, if you do a video recording, you don't have to do written minutes, so.
So I, I do have a question, a question. You say it's in the, in the corner. So do, I know in, in, at least I think in Oregon, somebody can be recorded, and if they're in public, they don't have to give permission. But do we need to have, like, does Peggy, or do they need to say, yes, it's okay, or don't look at me?
They're in a public place, it's a council meeting, so you know, you kinda weigh it there.
Like, we would normally introduce ourselves at your council meeting.
I mean, this is being recorded right now.
You're being filmed, they don't ask for anything.
And then is there interaction from the people to attend at home? Can they, like, raise their hand and say, I want to do public?
Depending on the system you use.
We can set that up if we want.
We'll be here all night.
Yeah, right.
I've been saying we wouldn't even have to attend the council.
Oh.
Yeah, you could just do this from your house. Yeah, they, they had flexibility even before COVID. The rule was that the council can hold their meeting anywhere they want, just as long as in their jurisdiction there is a place where somebody can gather to watch it. But they removed that during COVID, because we weren't allowed to go places, so that restriction's gone, like.
So we can do it without opening it for people, making the meeting go till midnight?
Yep.
Yeah, we can just say, here's a live stream, watch it if you want.
Okay.
Like, they want to come here and make public comment, they should come in here, that's why.
You have a gatekeeper who keeps you on track. Like, I know JD hates to hear me talk, so he could be the gatekeeper.
But I know we used to have a lot of people come to our city council meetings, sometimes I'd be in the classroom till almost twelve, twelve o'clock midnight.
That's what I mean, if they wanna talk or address council, they need to be here on site.
And then here, then every time he made, every time he even talked about something, he says, let's be meeting the city attorney on that, and talk for half an hour.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's.
Three minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah, but three minutes for three hundred.
When you got, when you got big meetings at six o'clock.
Well, also, you look at what time it is, and you look at your council meetings. Your council meetings normally run from seven until eight fifteen. And if you state that right up front before you start your Zoom call, then we usually run till eight fifteen.
Some of our meetings take a little longer because we got more, more on the agenda. But now we're kind of, Alex is, Alex is gotta get stuff straightened out for us, we gotta have less and less, all the, all the paperwork.
That's right, yeah.
Well, it's all about just staying within the structure of.